Yes, good. Good one.
That's better.
Welcome everyone to the Monday, September eleventh Committee of the Hall Administration Operations Meeting. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to our agenda? Hearing none. People want to, oh, do I need, do I need approval of that? Yes, does I need an over for the agenda moved by a councilor, second by a councilor or discussion? None. All in favor? Okay, disclosure, cuneary interests or conflict of interest in the general nature thereof. Does anyone have any disclosures to make?
I have a conflict of interest, Mr. Mayor on twelve B. I'll be removing myself. Paperwork's failing.
And it's over to the clerk. I also have a conflict of interest on twelve B. I have filed the paperwork for twelve B. I will be, the deputy mayor and I will both be vacating the room and we will need a chair. So does anyone volunteer at all? Okay, councillor Ward will, will take over the chair and let you know we'll excuse ourselves after A. So to the clerk, just for clarity, we went into closed session. We are all into closed session on an item A. We will commit out of closed session so the public sees the deputy mayor and I exit and go back in or?
The chair, you clear it now. So you definitely will have to if you prefer to be open and transparent.
Yes.
Walking out of the room.
Yes.
And then we're able to go in to full confession again and revert back.
Yeah, I think, I think if, if it's the will, I think everyone's okay with that. I prefer that, that not to commit and go back in. Okay. Alright, so two disclosures noted. Alright, so business arising. Does anyone have any business arising from the previous committee of the hall meeting minutes? Going, going, gone. Moving on to delegations and presentations and I will welcome from South Nation Conservation Authority, Rhonda.
Vows.
Vows. I was going to tang with it, but I wasn't sure. Carl Wickerda, welcome Carl. And councillor, I don't, are you part of the presentation then or not? Well, we'll recognize you. Councilor Wilson of Kempson today. Welcome.
Welcome, welcome aboard.
Alright, so typically Rhonda, we try to keep it to ten minutes or less for presentation if you need a few extra minutes. And by all means, I'm sure the committee will, will do that and then hopefully you'll entertain some questions at the end if the committee has them.
Perfect. Well, thank you for the introduction. Say to me as that. So I probably correct you on the top of each conservation. Again, thanks to Debbie Wilson. Debbie is one of our two board members representing the municipality. Please, Rachel. This area, this county level, you operate on a notional basis. So there are two representatives from the league general. Debbie's one and Debbie's the mayor, one and so, uh, God's the other. So just so you know that we've got a local representative, you call out your specific question about all things imposing. That's it or things that fit it rather. Or you want to, you know, move something to the table on behalf of your municipal, your, your council. That's the, this is your, one of your representatives and my also. So we're here today because the province changed the conservation of the products in that in twenty twenty four. And we've been dealing with the, the changes to that since then and a lot of them can be displaced and insurance where as before. Sometimes when, you know, you're running the pile of, of new, you're going to figure out what's been accomplished out of that. That's what we're trying to do is spread this some of them and come to council. And, and then remind everyone of the programs and go through some of the viewer passing steps that we've been asked to do by the province, which is mainly request an agreement for services that we've been providing throughout the whole shit. The rubber would be used by the last seventy five six years. So we kind of have an agreement in place to provide that if we're going to use any of our municipal lending to, to provide those services. So we'd like to talk to you about a bit about all those services that require the agreement and, and explain that piece. So the province breaks it into category one, two, and three programs. Category one programs are our core landing hazard prevention, flood prevention, flood mapping and so on. Our category two programs are by agreement with the municipal office. So for example, our safety program, which we provide to municipality. And category three is other services.
Thank you. So I'm just going to give you a few minutes just to recap the programs and services that are actually by exchange. We'll leave even on. Look at these programs and services starting January first, twenty twenty four. So they're basically our land stewardship programs, our education outreach and our conservation lands agreement. Conservation lands are dissolved, considered poor. The actual acquisition of lands is considered category three or partisan B. I'm just going to take a few slides to walk through some of these programs and services for anyone that may not be as familiar. So we have a very robust tree planting program. We plan across when they formally introduce this program started in twenty, sorry, nineteen ninety. And we're planting on average about thousand seedlings a year. We did see demand increase in the van around twenty twenty. And those numbers have stayed high. We're now planting in excess of a hundred thousand seedlings per year. Now, the program is supported through four sound tiers, fifty million tree program. It provides self-leased landlords, four tree planting projects. We also have a whole counter sales program. If you take care of smaller sites, you don't qualify with fifty million tree program. And also we've been targeting for the last number of years with under this powers and the spray as part of our forest conservation initiative. Provide pre-seeding links during our pre-seed days, uh, seven days. So those are some of the ways that we get seedlings in the ground. And again, uh, for sitter is a major funding partner. However, their cost, so their funding doesn't cover all the costs. So we made a few changes over the last year. In order to research and planning, we used to become more cost recoverable. But the reality is to provide a full service tree planting program is a small portion of letting required support that staffing that to do the site business, to do all the coordinating, to hire the contractors, and see the program here to the site business to treat the ground basically. So that's where these eleven dollars go is to support tree planting efforts. Uh, the next program we touched on is the water program. Uh, this is a longstanding program invested around for thirty years. It provides grants for landlords for doing water quality investment practices. Uh, we provided the, uh, sorry, I think plus the, uh, the rats, sorry, over your, uh, new slide. It's a breakdown of what we've provided as far as grants since the program we launched in nineteen ninety three. You'll see that a majority of the projects are in the UCF and category. Uh, we also have grants for shoreline protection, property practices as well as something. Uh, we take a look at all of the projects that were completed in that time. It's about a fifteen million dollar investment. And just to remind you, that's moving back into the local economy. When our landlord is doing these projects, providing materials and services, local community services, the local uh, service providers. So that is a reinvest in control of the economy. And the next program is our habitat restoration. Uh, this one is uh, restoration projects on public land. So in eastern Ontario, where eighty percent of the properties are privately owned. So if we are only to focus our efforts on maybe conservation thoroughly ones, we can be able to have impact on the large scale. So it's very important that we work with private lenders to help empower them to do restoration and habitat improvements on other problems. Now, we do this primarily through strong funding sources. Our staff are very good at finding grants, helping managers to process and actually securing money to do work on private plans. The graph notes some of our returns over the last five years. You'll see that we have successfully secured one and a half million dollars for complete projects on private, private landlords. And they include things like wetland restoration, grasslands, uh, entry finding problem projects. Uh, municipal levy that goes into this program. It uses leveraging. So it's basically the stat kind of takes for us to be able to fill up grant applications. And with money secured to help a landlord do the process in terms of the project. And then doing all the reporting that comes along with that. So the restoration piece is possible because we're able to leverage the municipal money that we have, uh, hundred dollars to more than double, uh, as you can see the graph that we have put into the program over the last five years.
Um, the other piece is education and outreach. So our education programs are dealing with our custom appropriate basis. Uh, we occasionally need bits of lending on this draw and get those grants, uh, to, to provide those services that I can call it. We also provide approximately ten thousand dollars per year in community environmental grants. Uh, those, those grants help community groups to complete projects that free planting, uh, river and park cleanups, fishing garbys, river races, community gardens, pollinator initiatives, uh, youth education and so on. So big broad range of, of programs and money for straight.
That was just note to you, maybe if you know everyone, the fish camp, which we were able to add to the current location a few years ago. That's again an example where uh, Zach nice and part of huge dollars for, uh, coordinating with those festivals.
The last piece is the conservation mindset. So we've been extremists since that, since period. Uh, forested land and environment sensitive land over the last few years. When we've been able to turn those, what was previously a special level for forest land acquisition. Uh, we've been able to turn that into approximately three or sometimes four, uh, times with much funding or with pulling federal funds. Uh, and also we're able to leverage it to, to do what we can also proceed. So we'll work with landowners who want to donate part of their property and sell part of their property to come up with a tax to that to way to, to do so. Uh, so we're able to put those dollars to could use a piece of our, our country law to do the class. Uh, we've been securing conservation lands sensitivities. An original start process of erosion. Uh, more recently to be with water quality and deprostration concern in the general public. Uh, we, we find this one in the best part of the world where we can, uh, serve the, uh, the, uh, city's solid water resource to be the form. The trees are a great path to, to, it's very good.
Also, just to recap again, the category three is private land searching outreach. And again, municipal dollars are really supporting that staff and resources of case to coordinate, to seek external funding to aid in a project and then do the necessary reporting, um, to those event bodies. And also for the grants for the E one program including environmental grants. And it's about a three point eight eight percent of the total municipal levy that we receive, uh, which is about a hundred seventy three thousand. So that's for all of our municipal. And for the private law, for the contribution land security, again, the actual procurement is the piece of category three. So the funding that comes in supports the purchase, but also supports the installation costs of a legal survey. Uh, it's about eight point one two percent of total municipal levy. So possibly three thousand, three hundred sixty two thousand and four, twenty twenty four. Uh, again, these are not new programs and services. We're not here to ask for any of these funding or to add new programs. You basically need to sign an agreement to allow us to continue delivering these programs and services out on January first. So the budget we see before you, uh, is still an estimate because again, you don't have a lot of pressure put by the board. So the actual dollar amounts will vary slightly because we're not our draft budget. For the first, uh, second call again, the municipal levy question, that's the twenty twenty three numbers. Twenty twenty four will just receive their very, very similar. So the break down was very important to put about in the past. You'll see that for the sixty two thousand approximately that ever was recurring cases, twelve levy, about seventy five hundred of that would be referenced as category three program. So we could just be taking that small supply and using it for the grants we just talked about. And again, the next step is we just need to solidify in the agreement. So we have provided the staff to draft agreement. So understanding will probably come for council this month. Uh, it's, uh, my agreement will also screen municipalities. We wanted to reflect the larger approach. We also wanted to minimize the straight, straight and burden down the road instead of having eighteen sixteen separate agreements, especially as we will have happy, we all agree. Uh, again, that agreement sets the maximum policy that gives top group how we will be funding. There are a few requirements we agree with. The province dictates that, that there must be a bottom of review. There must be a clause for cancellation or amendments to be agreed with. And what we're proposing is a five-year term with a bottom of review for another five years. It will always satisfy the fact five year review. So that's basically sums up the agreement and should be coming with work council later this month. And that concludes our summary. We're happy to do any questions.
Thank you, Rhonda. Carl. Uh, I will look into, to the committee for questions. Looking for hands. Deputy Mayor?
Oh, thank you. I see under your education there, which is a ten thousand dollar a year community environment, environmental grants.
Yes.
Uh, our next, uh, uh, piece of business up on our agenda is the paranormal canal cleanup. Would that be something we could look at?
Yes. So we agree, the, uh, rent for three hundred dollars each is the maximum money. Uh, the municipal can apply they have in the past. So basically it's a letter, uh, summarizing what money can be used for. And then typically right now goes to our communications committee. On next year, we will be reverting that to the staff level. We will just speed things up. It sounds like we could be eligible. And I can pass it along to your first colleague for any unfinished questions.
Maximum three hundred dollars?
Maximum three hundred dollars.
And on the same token, uh, education outreach, we had the fishing dairy two's in a row. Great success. I love it. I never miss it. I have smiles when my kids start catching a little fish and, and well set up by you people of educating them of, of, of the fish, the type of fish that's in the river and so on. So a job well done on that, I have to think. Uh, Mr. Hunter, who was our councillor, who brought that forward, he was on our committee. It's a great, great opportunity. I hope we can continue a partnership with you on that. So thank you again.
It's actually our only can I miss the message.
Pardon?
Is our only can for this something about the St. Lawrence River?
Yeah.
It's a nice issue for us.
Good. Thank you. And that's, thank you, Mayor. And continue your good work. Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Luke. Uh, I just got a couple of questions. Uh, I'm not sure whether I heard it correctly. You say you have contractors to plant the trees?
Yes. Yes. So we have our hundred thousand plus tree program. So we have done as many as twenty five thousand in-house. It's not a good job. I'm sorry.
Where are the beds for those conceding? Where's your platform?
Sorry?
Where's the bed for the ceiling, the ceiling? Where's your platform?
Uh, so the people are basically coming to us looking for opportunities to plant. So there is a, a one thousand minimum for qualified for the tree program. That allows us to have a contractor come in and manage the landlord. Anything less than a thousand trees, we deal with, we counter. So landlords who purchase subsidized killings, they need to plan and resolve that.
Okay, thank you. I've got one more question if you don't mind.
I was just going to ask that. I think our best staff, we planted it was not, I don't know what the word is. Uh, it's something to do with my height, I think. Our mass is probably sending them today, something that I shouldn't make up today. So, uh, we're putting down as a big, I'm gonna take it in a small, uh, where they were in the spring and fall.
Absolutely. Another question I had for you is the clean water program. Are you people, uh, look out for the same going riverside or does that, does that look out for the coast there?
Uh, so clean water grants, so our grants are eligible to any one of the jurisdiction. The only thing you don't find right along the state of the country for shoreline is erosion grants, you know, just because if we start moving it up, it will be funny with applications. But really, the projects that are coming in, um, have a smaller benefit because of the scale of the river versus projects that are on our smaller tributaries and municipal rates. We live in the watershed. So anyone who's been able to require would apply for any of our grants. The only exception is erosion along the St. Lawrence River. Tributaries in the St. Lawrence River will qualify, but not on major.
Were you thinking of a specific example, councillor now?
I'm sorry.
Were you thinking of a specific, uh, project example or?
Well, I like, I'm thinking along the St. Lawrence River currently. Like, do we have to have permission from you people to put it?
Oh, cross parts regulation. Yes. So it is part of the area that we regulate. So the name required for permit to be named where on the shore in the water. It's So there is levels of permits. So it may be number one, but we may also require MRF or possibly partnership.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
And just one quick question. Your community grants, is there a window where they open and close or are they like an ongoing thing?
Uh, it's ongoing until all funding is allocated. So, um, if there's still some funding left, you took it the, uh, fully allocated by November. Uh, but there's probably still a bit of that and the improvement throughout the year.
When does the cycle start over again?
Um, basically it starts January first. Since we have one budget proof of the year, then we know we have not been funded. We can start doing that position at that point.
Thank you.
No questions at all. I understand that's a, well. Yeah. Um, I can't be the guy sometimes, but so, uh, I, I, you know, you guys do great work and, and I'm not trying to dissuade or belittle that. But I do worry about signing a five-year, a five-year contract, for instance. Um, and, 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 you know, how we fit in in a, in a place where we're at one point three nine percent in City of Ottawa, seven six point seven or seven, it's sixty percent. You know, how do we fit in, in, in that big fish world as far as making sure that we can get our, the service that, that we, you know?
It's a great question. Um, and, you know, you know, City of Ottawa, in, in our reality, I mean, you're saying this of the council when we go to Iraq. Uh, but they, you know, put in more than they get back in general. It's, it's not the case that they're taking, uh, too much. They're, you know, kind of as a, as a, in our case, Hank Walters being spouting, we reevaluate their absolute downstream being spouting. This, they see that big picture within part of the watershed approach. Uh, and they're, they're fine with that. Our board members who are from City of Ottawa councils, they're, they, they understand that they, they put more on these grants than they actually uh, get back in their dispensary. Um, so we're too proud of that person. I hope that relays the concern about, you know, the allocation. I think most of our model will be the staff to get a, a good share of, of the pot. Uh, in terms of the five-year agreement, um, you know, although we're actually going to cancel and then move through the steps and move the agreement to cancel, um, it is a, it's true that probably the locals have advised, um, by that five years, for the prior review and the will as long as no any concerns related.
Anyway, I believe we've been operating this way for decades. Now we have to split out these programs and further the beginning of place. Had the act not changed, this would have been part of our budget and you wouldn't have seen that small portion come out separately as a category. So we're not proposing to change anything other than we have now signed the agreement to continue doing what we do. Uh, so what we can do too, and we, we do mean this before the pandemic, we kind of follow up rapidly. We do try and meet with our municipal partners, you know, once a year to be able to provide an update of what programs and services benefited, benefited from this year. And just about making that process over the pandemic, it was something we would like to bring back. So we were doing staff, letting municipalities provide that information to, to staff. So that's almost the possibility for us to provide that information, um, if you ever receive the numbers.
And, and, and there's one last question actually, and I think you probably answered it to me already, but, uh, so, so as far as the makeup goes of, of the SNC board, for instance, we no changes expected. There we still, I think it's every year or something like that. We rotate around, uh,
So it's not a four-year term. So we think, you know, it's four years. This four years is Augusta and our friend go. And the next four-year term will be required. So there's a rotation that's set out every day to, uh, while municipalities back or nomination actually.
That is, that is a council, uh, for guys. Actually, it's a nice model. We've been moving, uh, encouraging some of the other organizations to kind of look at that approach in your.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's, that's just working on it. John?
I don't really have many questions. I just think that Rhonda said this when I was on the board, this come along and, uh, to me, we're basically just creating more work for, for the South Nation Conservation, which is more red tape than put in place. It's been worked for decades and, and there were no problems with it. And the big thing that bothered me, if councils don't approve this, enter into agreement, you can lose all these ones because they can't fund it unless they have the agreement with it. So I think it's imperative on the councils to sign an agreement. With, with, and with the, the program that's involved here, I don't think a one-year term works because a lot of them are, are spread. They're planning, they're going out of them. They're planning things four years ahead that's going to take place. If they haven't got an agreement, they can't do that. So I think it's, uh, you know, imperative who the council is going to come on board. Cause your levy's not changing and it's just, I guess. Being more transparent where your money's actually going, but as long as all the councils have had good representatives on there, I think I brought back every year to him and told him about what, what it was. That's the thing. And I think South Nation always been pretty good board members we've had here. I've heard reports from Western Ontario that that was maybe where it started and we're just transparent. I mean, we weren't pointing down there wasn't, it was forthcoming with the information. And if that's where, where I've made errors and wrong, but I think that's where, where the vote was brought in. But now it has to, the board members have to be a minimum of seventy five percent have to elect councillors that are, are board members before. There's probably eighty percent of them are just appointees or even one council. Now they have to be elected representatives. It's pretty transparent now.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Second? Alright, so, um, uh, so just for clarity, and I know it's been said about a hundred times already, but just for my own notice, it's not a new twelve percent. That twelve percent is, is out of the original hundred.
Right. We're basically blowing at how much we typically spend, uh, in past years of our levy on those programs. And we're, uh, bringing that evidence for people as a good measure.
Good. Thanks, Carl. Um, and I think, you know, just in, in my role as mayor, uh, the things that I have heard, you know, both through the last term with councillor Hunter and with, uh, our many builders and people that work with Snow, South Nation is that you are an impediment to, to them. You're actually quite a help. So, uh, where we hear across the province that sometimes that's not the case, uh, from almost anyone that I've talked to. So maybe it doesn't, it actually seems to remove some of the barriers and helps a lot with, with getting things done versus not getting things done. So, yeah. So thanks for, for all that you do and thanks for coming, uh, coming to see us tonight and we'll see this on the twenty. Okay, tonight. Maybe we'll see this, uh, tonight. Or the latest tonight. Oh, we're just, so then we'll actually make a decision. Yeah. Okay, good. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to six, which is consent agenda. There are no items. I'll look to the clerk. There's no items on the consent agenda. So up for discussion, uh, which is seven A, councillor Martell, I believe you brought, uh, this one forward. I would assume you'll the initial discussion on the paranormal cleanup. But you will this discussion.
Still, I prefer to do it. Um, to the mayor and my councillor, you know, to, you know, to, uh, in, in, in this side and then the discussion. Well, thank you. Uh, through the mayor, I think everyone at the table knows that when I ran on my election platform, items was to to clean up a little bit along the east canal. I would say along the east canal. First one to, I, I, I would say a portion of the, you know, east of British.
So, and there was a link where the department assigned it?
Yes, yes. So we're talking about from the old stone pedestal. But when we say following it, the stone pedestal.
Principal. I think as long as we align.
That, that was wrong. Even the numbers, you know, the area we need to. Two, that's, that's.
Everybody, everybody knows what we're talking about.
Yeah. So the intention would, would be to kind of clean up that area, clean up around the, the pedestal and the first little section of canal there. Put up some streetlights, some benches, just kind of make it a usable area with the intention of encouraging making that section the canal a useful area. You know, maybe do some boat stuff in there, fishing stuff, some skate stuff. Make it kind of a touristy destination spot. Um, I met with the, uh, C E O on site there and we kind of went over the thought of what we were going to do. Which brought us to this cool study that was done in two thousand and seven. Is that correct? Which brought us to, uh, this cool study that was done in two thousand and seven, is that correct? So, uh, yeah, next steps would include confirming and define their focus timeline for petition. Single year, multi-year, obtaining costs on updating bank stabilization study, or a portion there are mutual agencies that may play a role. Be on that, I guess it's open for discussion.
You're done, I, I, I. Uh, always, that's, I mean, uh, as long as that's okay, I think. I'm, I'm good to go. Right, not breaking promises, but, okay, so, um, certainly in support of, of cleaning up this area, I know. Um, we helped out with a community group a couple of years ago, we pulled shopping carts out of the water, we. You know, it's become a, a place where there are needles, where there, you know, there is drug paraphernalia there, uh. With all of the undergrowth, it certainly, um, has turned into, um. An area for, for bad congregating versus, versus good and for, versus tourism, we've, um. You know, I think staff has done a fantastic job getting, getting their areas where they can run mower along and keep, keep the grass nice, and there's a ton of people. Who walk it from, from Bridge Street all the way down to the staircase, continue along the pathway and then end up going right down Dundas. Right, right to where the cut is in, in the canal, uh, and it gets utilized as a walking trail, uh, uh, a lot, um. But that area around the cardinal sign, um, and I can see, you know, what you have for docking and for pop-ups, I'm not exactly sure. Um, you know, what the end, end game is, but when it comes to just a general good cleanup to, to get it back to. Um, you know, the stones and, and the beginning, I'm certainly, yeah, I'm certainly supportive of getting that back to. You know, what it should be now versus what it is.
So when we look at the, the diagram, if you pop up in the, in the placebo and the docking, that was sort of my artist's journey with the idea. Which is. Very indicative of this whole project, is a good appetite, and there's, there's people that are ready to step on board, or are on with it. Like this, this artist actually sent me a message yesterday, wanted to know if there's anything else he could do before leaving, there's. There's hunger for that to make this a. And like you say, it's being used a lot now, to make it. And I don't want to, uh, give the impression that it's, you know, a place with nothing to do, so there's a lot of. Good action happening down there too, there's a lot of fishing, there's a lot of people walking the trails, just enjoying the natural wildlife. So I think the intention would be to manicure this area in, uh, page fifty-two. To do, to keep the area down to the little S for the last street light would be manicured and cleaned. And keep the rest of the trail just as nature trail, the way it is now. I don't think there's any appetite at all to climb up on the stones and, and deal with any of that. We're not talking about ruining stones, rebuilding stones, cleaning stones, we just want to make this area. For that, a little more aesthetically using, useable, that to. Pedestal could be like the focal point, it's huge, beautiful, that could be a place where people stop, you know, let's take some pictures by the old. Canal thing. There are a couple of, uh, of items, there's one gentleman, I'm, I'm sure you've heard this too, that has the original. Turning thing for the, the old bridge that is willing to donate it to the municipality, you know, we could put some displays like that along there. Some cultural things, some historical things, some artsy things. It fits in super well with what's happening in the US to the township with the, you know, and. You know, the historical vibe there and the artsy vibe, it just kind of expands easy as a, a cultural. Destination. I would look at this as, I don't want to go in and get, you know, fifteen million and go crazy, and. I wanted, I envisioned this going at a small piece at a time, starting with, you know, cleaning up this area. Trying to get it into use, we're, we're building infrastructure, but more importantly, we're trying to build community there. Or we get people engaged, we get businesses engaged, saying, hey, yeah, I'd love to do it, you know, uh, to sponsor a street sign and, uh. And at their table, put my logo on it, we want this, you know, a microcosm of the community. There, and you got me talking.
See, and I get you going. Um, I have one, one other question to, uh, to staff, and to the C E O, so, um, recently we. We saw a couple of, um, horse main breaks, mainly at the end of, uh, Walker, Walter Street. And most recently, the parking lot by the, um. My mom. Um, is that horse main continue along the top of the rocks all the way down to Joseph?
Uh, yeah, so it would actually start at the top, um, Bridge Street.
Okay, and, and there's no worries with, uh, with the trees or vegetation that there's, I mean, since that force means. Was put there, the vegetation certainly changed, there's a lot more tree areas along the top of the rocks and. Um, you know, looking back at historical pictures, there is none of that, is that, it's not an issue, is it?
Well, with the, with the mayor, I think that's where, um. I, I, I would highly recommend before we do too much is to do at least a little bit, um. Doing a, a portion of that stabilization study, since it was two thousand and seven. For where, where those stones stand now, or may, may you come back and, 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 you know, no. No further sort of deterioration, which, which is good, but considering that we, we have had a. At least one portion in break in long, that's all, I did, we, we. The, before, if you consider moving forward, there, there are track, more beating than I, than I, but. From a digital perspective, it would be, it would be one wild, definitely, at least the stone.
Yeah, can I follow on, on that, uh, as the C E O, so you, are you talking about to, to. Not to go back to the. To the engineer's report, but to real, to go back and do bore holes and lab testing? Should we do that, before we carry on going further to see if this changed from two oh seven to. To twenty-three?
So, uh, through the, uh, through the, I, I, I would, I would be very, very proud to, uh, at least reach out and call her to repeatedly completed that. Stabilization study and sort of, you know, an idea of, uh, you know, magnitude of cost, or, you'll call it. Update, uh, you know, sole origin and what that would include, I think it would. Uh, I think it would be appropriate, uh, I think it would be a focus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And, uh, councillor, uh, my tell you're saying you don't want to do anything with the rocks, like on the north side?
The intention was not to do anything with the stone, it was more to.
The stone on the north side or both?
Either side.
Okay.
I would see that as turning into an incredibly expensive project, it's going to end up with another spot, another mall.
Well, on page forty-seven kind of puts it in, uh, in a nutshell, when we look at your options, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, and that's.
Can do anything there, so.
That's a whole.
I mean, that's, I, thank, yeah, yeah, and that's an all, and so, yeah, I mean, I know, and I, I love, I love the attitude. Uh, I, I love your page fifty-two and fifty-three, I agree with the C E O, though, before you look further, we're going to have to. See what our engineers think of it, or if anything's changed since two oh seven. And it's a good opportunity to see if there's any heritage grants out there for this project, so. That'd be totally where money would come from was here, it's, uh, it's, it's.
You know, uh, through the mayor, if I could, and C E O, also, if we're, we're doing that study. Are we considering just doing a section that we intend to, to use, or would you do the entire canal on both sides?
I would see the, 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 the minimum that. You were, you're, 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 you're looking at, to make sure, uh, you can better improve it on. Depending, depending on the cost, but it would probably be worthwhile to, uh, to go look at that on your side. Uh, just to, to, to give a better feel of where, where things are, either. Again, the same, potentially regress and do.
The, to the C E O, the, um, a lot of deterioration of the rocks on the north side appear. When you're walking along there to be the result of where disconnected stone drain lanes are, so. Up there.
Uh, through the, yeah, I would say that, uh, not the boat holes are certainly what would appear to be the worst areas.
No way that. I mean, that's, I'm assuming, are they ours? Are the United States? Probably walk them into a weird as well.
It's a bit, it's a bit odd, the, 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 the stones, uh, are cer- certainly are, um, the Mississippi's. Uh, the outlet, uh, when you're carrying it over, over top of the, um. Maybe it's a little question a lot, uh, on whose responsibility that would be, most likely to be. Uh, at least to, to, I mean, I, I, I.
Yeah.
I, 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 I would certainly say so, unlikely that there'd be any type of, uh, torn, community.
Well, so I think it's worthwhile noting that, when we, you know, I lived at, at Walter Street, um, you know, there's, there's. Deterioration, or there was deterioration, you know, at the hill at Walter Street, the township took, you know. Uh, notice of that, and they've certainly put in cement along the bottom so that the water drains properly, and. So that it hasn't, doesn't result in deterioration on the stones further on, on the south side. Um, if we know that there is deterioration being caused on the north side, is there any way that we can engage with the United States to get? You know, maybe at least, and we're not going to be able to afford to fix them, but to prevent them from going further.
Actually, I, 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 I would certainly say that, that one of the, one of the parties that we, reaching at here is this, uh, to, uh. If we, if we were to go in, in forward scope with, with, with that stabilization study, I, I, I would certainly be. optimistic that the county would, uh, participate similar to, to, uh, then. Participating back in, in two thousand and seven, along with, uh, along this side of the chain, but because there was some funding that they wanted to. Respect for that, not sure that, that, that funding would exist again, when I think if we can get an idea of where that. Um, where we're sitting with that, then further, how, how about further notification of getting, uh, maybe a strong outlets, um. Prepare.
There. So. When we've, when we talked about engaging. And this is, bear with me for a second, so, so like when we did consultations about water and sewer in Johnstown. Right, there was a consideration given to, to that discussion. When we were engaged in it, we might be told that we have to do. Right? When we engage the, the consultants for, for water and sewer, is there, is there any implication here that if we do a rock. Stabilization study that indicates that we have to do it, are we going to be forced to spend the money to do it?
Through the mayor, that back in two thousand and seven, the, there, there, there was a number of options provided with. With respect to the current status, and at that, at the time. Basically, the north side was signed, indicating that, that the canal stones were, uh. Be unstable, and that was the remedial action made of that. Depending on, in, in all fairness, depending on what that stabilization, um, funding would came back. Particularly on the north side, potentially some, some additional action may, may be required. And, and no, no, I, I would suspect that, that, that would primarily to be, um. Improve numbers to make that. And, but, it would be fair.
So, Mr. Mayor, I share your concern on that, we don't want to be known as a council that wants to major park and. The canal, until the close of the canal.
I don't.
Yeah. That is, that is a risk, you know, often safely, but. The reality is, sometimes when you're paying someone to find, if there's something on something, they're going to do their, their damnedest to find something on with it. And then we're going to do with that.
Or on page forty-seven, restoration more than ten million dollars. Something that would.
About starting in two thousand and seven.
Yeah.
Well, if, if. If parents should have. Forty million, uh, they, they, you know, they, they, you know, potentially. But, maybe, maybe you may find options where some of those areas, and, and stuff. You know, with respect to that, and some signs to prevent, uh, activities from occurring. In those sections, without any more of the, 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 right, that's what I'm still.
The north side's always been that.
Yeah, maybe that's.
So, here, the mayor, that being said, if we not to square it, work on the south side now.
My, 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 my actual advice would be to at least do that stroke stabilization study, it's sixteen years old. We have a force name, that not go on the power that, and we had a situation where that force name break. Uh, we think for. For everyone's sake involved, that, that it would be, it would be an appropriate measure.
Maybe for the loss of.
Uh, talking about these others that, that is, is it. If the, the, the pedestal, you're in the south side of there, uh, it would, it would be, to, to make some progress.
You want to. Yeah, so, I mean, page forty-seven, there's not a single one of these numbers that doesn't scare you when you, when you come into. To, to where we're at and where we came from with regards to this year's budget, we, we, we had lots of roads that we put off. Out of last year's budget, we're trying to get to this year, and, you know, at, you know, two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, like Palmer and F A Road's. And there as well, that, uh, you know, I don't want to be, to have to tell somebody, sorry, your road didn't get repaired again, because we. You know, uh, did a little bit of work of stabilizing some of that, some of that, that bank, so that's my concern for sure, on, on that one, um. You know, and, and I, I share the mayor's thoughts on, or his comment on, you know, if we do this study, what happens is if there's a minimum that has to be done. Just to, to stabilize, not that we shouldn't do it, but again, it'd be something that, that, you know, putting, putting, uh, good money after bad potential, and, and, uh. You know, not restoring one of these roads potentially down the road, or down, probably this, this year, right, so, uh. So, you know, I'm, I'm quite concerned about, this is maybe not the, uh, uh, the year that I would recommend, you know, something, if something on this one. To rain, unless, uh, you know, it is really obvious that there's something definitely wrong that we have to fix, but, uh. So, you know, like I said, and, and I love the idea, I love the power of idea down there, I just, I just can't see. It's, uh, it's something that I'd get behind for sure, that is point, but.
Uh, we were talking, the situation looks something really bad, is there some reason why we don't have caulkings? Signs or something else for people not to climb it on and walk it down to there and everything? Like, is, is it that big a danger or threat?
I think we're, if you're the, if you're the mayor, then, then our science, uh, over, you know, respect of this one, you'd be, uh, please save it.
I don't see that down there, they walk, and, and, or rather, look at it.
If they say they're on the on the north, remember the other side, the base is not particularly high. Facing facing.
No, if nothing got in here, nothing on the bottom.
So would. Sort of, uh the picture that I'm looking at right now looks really nice just along the the causeway with that too. But there's no reason we couldn't do something there. I mean, it it's hideous like I know, even I see the sign for trees going up. But I mean, this picture is attractive. Oh, there's a book, but it's kind of.
We walked down there today, right? No, easy walk, doesn't look like the picture.
Now, like, two years ago, it did look like that without that building, it used to take all the trees out of there.
Uh, yes, it did. Okay, so wrapping this thing up, um. Is there a recommendation?
No.
It's just a discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the the nice steps that we have to get this uh. Interest uh from first committee to to more that feelings and part of uh. Follow up with respect to. Again, obviously, if we start to. What it could be is a stabilization sheet size and you know, you know, start the start the ones in office. Yeah. Person clean up.
I think, you know, listening, didn't care from either either end of the of the table, I know there's four from council that certainly supported the. Like some form of a stabilization study and and clean up, one doesn't. Um and and I don't know if Karen's or John want to speak, but.
I I think um I think it could be very nice, it does really. With the Lucas ones down there and but it has to be some light to do something. Uh but I think I think you're right on, I didn't even talk about. With historical. Clean up and so on, because that's that. If you could find something here, that's. That part of duty. You know, it would definitely be worthwhile to do some digging into corporate and.
Definitely.
Well. I don't see nothing wrong with doing a little more than cleaning up around the sign and cleaning up and as far as spending money on on the. Study for the stabilization. Uh so I I would uh. Pay that for your public works department and decide when when and if there's they need a study to. Or or your force lively going across, they've got to worry about something from happening, okay, you're going to go ahead. Say they don't think they have any longer. Mind if I would just start spending the study if you actually need it. And start it. Last council and this council start cleaning up the water pump and you're getting greater reviews than the lock and stuff along there, there's still a lot of things in the schedule to be done along. Along there, I think you might better try to finish move by just before the studies others, so. I've been.
Were you around for the two thousand seven study, were you on council then?
I wasn't on, I'm council, I don't know, they're all the, they're. I'm a county, so you must do what the valuation was going to be, so. There that uh.
No, I guess.
It was. I guess the the cost wise effect that most people didn't like it was equipment, but in the study. There was was the removal, the sale of the stones. Would pretty dear pay for half the cost of stabilizing and that those stones are unfortunate. And that if you take them out, you sell them, there are no value put on, okay, value of the stones worth. They have a price to remove themselves, but they didn't, I don't think there's any place in there where the value of these stones is worth. When they're taken out, but. You know, uh and these aren't, you can't consider these are mineral stones, because these are cut stones, they're not blast. Blast some um um armor all all stone right now will for about a hundred dollars a ton. These are the stones probably which is money piece, so. That's on the.
Yeah.
Why don't we take it in the price of my, did it push it off to? Take it out, you know, I mean, I don't think there's any should be a lot of, but. They've gained if you need the stones to stabilize the bank.
What the points, you said three hundred, John, a stone? One run on, two, three. He wants to get the stones on any.
Stone, everybody's. They're not all the same size, one end could be two feet long or thirty, and the other end could be a foot, if you can have a look at them, there's about two stones identical. So that's why there's a lot of.
Okay, uh wrapping this up, so.
Yeah. Yeah, my final word, sure. Mr. Mayor, to the C A O, is there any possibility that we could have our staff just take a look around at that school and see if there's any, you know, if they feel safe cleaning some of that out of there? If we need to start, it would be something, you know, I was down there with a guy that. Used to operate equipment like that this morning, and he seemed to have the impression. We'd have the equipment to to be able to clean some of that out very safely and efficiently. Talking about casters nails.
Mr. Mayor, I I I would. Just a next step, so we get some. Cost estimates with respect to the study is. No, I I'm not sure this will uh that would need uh. Loan that is on various departments that that every day at time and uh it suggests that before we undertake. Too much that we just. Get a better feel of what was happening.
So we would hear back.
All in well, we should be able to have an update by the next year.
I hope you get to that.
So just so through the measures to to clarify, we are going to. Do the entire canal or just the section we're talking about?
I think that's it, and we're just going to start your giving a higher level estimate for that with that cost.
So is the higher level estimate of the section we're going to do or the whole canal?
It would be for both. There'd be an option soon, so it would be an option to do. And I do I do appreciate that. That study was done in two thousand and seven and um. You can you. You can look and and indicate that maybe nothing further has deteriorated, but um. I'm also a little concerned that you have, you know, you're too that close to that north and probably uh it's inappropriate that, you know, a. Fifteen years or so after the fact to 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 get a little better feel for. What the situation is, you know? May 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 be maybe good news.
One last one, Mr. Mayor, do you have any concerns with the canal at the west end? Would be asking to look at that, you know, if it's a safety of these other people walking in there now.
And to to the mayor, I would. I can't recall right off if that foreman was was completed at the at the time of that study and other that just. Had focused on north and south, so a piece of bridge tree, so I think if if that hadn't been completed, I wouldn't necessarily. I think it would take smaller tasks and in particular, maybe maybe we'll be making improvements.
Thank you. Okay, you got what you needed? I think it's something. Good conversation, all. Uh, all right, moving on to seven D, which is natural gas expansion program, township submission. Who's going to speak, C A O?
But thanks, Mr. Mayor, I just just wanted to communicate that we did receive some follow up uh following the uh. Beginning of relegation, the 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 ministry of environment is uh. At least a discussion consultation paper, future of natural uh gas expansion and home heating affordability, so. Well, I thought it was worthwhile to 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 get this in public package since it basically they're they're looking uh for feedback from um. Multiple stakeholders and with the with municipal government and a lot of those uh stakeholders and um. Yes, with with respect to at this stage for committee, look at the main particular um. Area that you you may want to do to look at uh uh a little further as we uh look to uh prepare the submission, which we will uh. Reashine the committee with uh. Commission progress, we want that. We we.
So before we uh we break into any discussion, so um we've made the presentation twice, right? We made it at Roma this, well, maybe even more than that actually, right? Because that's twice this year, I'll say. And we made it at Roma, we made, I made it again at at A M O. Um and certainly uh more positive response, I think, at at A M O than than certainly. Or maybe follow up than than Roma as well. It'll be when we do this, we will, or I'm assuming we're gonna go ahead with an application again in December. Um they've extended that deadline, I think, to the thirteenth or fifteenth or something like that, right? Are we, so is the question on this, are are we wanting to put this same? Presentation forward, I mean, we have all background information, right? Surveyed the residents, we've done the last council, you know, um went and knocked doors, did all of that legwork, staff put it all together in a in a nice neat package. Are we looking to add something in addition to that, or are we, or is staff's intention to move or asking us if we want to do that same package forward?
Well, I think we're, what they're looking, really looking for is feedback on the. Natural gas expansion program today.
The what, sorry?
Look looking for for feedback with respect to the natural gas extension program today, like the first few phases. If if you if you're if you're involved.
Were we part of that?
We. We were, we were, we we were not, obviously, but uh I think what I think what's fair to say. Is that the program workovers described, often rates the um uh projects being approved. Uh compared to what the demand is, um. There's not, there's not a a good advice uh for um, it's just. The game, they they just, they're unable to um meet that demand, so. Think what this really is, is. Consultation period, if we revisit at the at the program in in the in uh suggestions and have some improvements with that program moving.
And and did. You're looking for us for that recommendation, did staff have recommendation to that?
So at this at this stage, because it's December fifteenth, we know you want to just get that, get the information uh to committee, give some thought and. Find a way through and staff will be the same over the next uh over the next several weeks and uh we'll look at formulae and a response uh back.
So. So going going back, and I I I mean, it's phase three, so obviously being picked up on phase one or two, lots of other competing interests did. Um billions of dollars, whatever, we we applied about eight times for the water and sewer project before successful getting. Getting that done for.
Um. I don't I don't I don't say that maybe a little, but yes, I don't. I don't say. I don't say that, I say that.
Okay, um there's been a lot of work as as, you know, and from my standpoint, and I know staff time is, you know, valuable and and I'm not sure exactly. Um how much time staff has to spend on. You know, on on this, when we already have, you know, that interest but forward, um they're both. You know, collaboratively with Augusta and and Prescott, you know, we've made that presentation, I. I think it's, you know, it's a good presentation, um like, I don't know if expanding it or changing it's like. Is the suggestion that it would make us? Like somehow get closer to the top or?
I would say it would be it would be worthwhile, if nothing else, to at least provide people with current model. With 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 phase one and phase two, if you know the phase two, some of those projects will not start until early twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, twenty twenty. Phase three. Technically hasn't been released, so we could be working at a time right now, even if we were successful, you know, could be twenty twenty or twenty three. Right, because that would accept on the timeline. But I don't, I I think it's, I I think it's being that with respect to that, if there's some um. Part of the consideration, I think, I don't know, you may want to talk forward to the to the problems to be there. Right now, with the system, well, that program isn't uh delivering the results that. Not only having certain needs about. Right, with the high man with respect to to from the from the resident perspective, from the. Business perspective uh to uh that have natural gas.
It's an interesting spot, right, with with the uh, you know, with the conversion to heat pump in a lot of, in a lot of cases for, you know, for. For a lot of like those geothermal, those other uh types, and there's certainly a push on to do that, it'd be it'd be interesting to see by twenty thirty. What what kind of impact that actually has to, you know, the the mine expansion, so. Um, okay, so. So unless anyone has anything else to add or or wants to discuss it further, you're looking to have a further discussion somewhere, is that the idea with some feedback to to give that for December?
Right, just basically introductions, the paper, to to review.
We'll have another discussion.
Likely next month?
Yeah. Anyone else you want to go before?
Yeah, I I think it's really important to get in behind this and and I wonder, is there any, is it possible? If we could get maybe a high school student to do some of this legwork and not our full time staff. Bring your, you know, someone in and it's. Thinking about maybe getting into municipality. And have them do a little legwork, so I think it's very important that we we send out all letters. That especially from number two again, all letters to them. Uh same question, we went door to door. I'm gonna fill it out, uh get a hold of all of our contractors, who say, yes, we need natural gas and space and all. And this number two highway, I really do believe that we should really push on this. And and not a discussion now and bring it back to you, I think we should move on. And I think it's not our full time staff, maybe, but I just wondering if we can't, I'll get something like that with a student from Severnham, well, we could. Maybe do a little bit of that legwork for us, pick away from from the staff. Month. Co-op, yeah, like a co-op student. They can dig into it. That's my feelings, because I think it's very important, they're telling us they want feedback. From, we never had this before, like from contractors. You know, or anything like that, gas or any non-government organization, so if we can get farmers behind us. Who wants to open up natural gas on one of the drivers, I think it's worthwhile that we should. The co-op student there, try to let them do the little bit of this legwork.
Especially the cost of propane is is high.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I was heading for eight or nine. You know, I was heading for eight or nine thousand dollars in propane expenses this year. We went to where these heat pumps, we didn't have butter guts or something like that, can be better.
Okay, so dry, it's like.
Yeah, why do we get your guys like that, but, uh, you know, I can, exactly, we need to get something out there for them, for sure. But, you know, part of the first table, it almost seems like, why bother, you're not gonna do it for us, but, uh, that's the worst thing that's happened. Okay, so further discussion again next. Okay. Uh, then we're on to action, I'm sorry. So, um, I guess we're looking at, um. SNC municipal agreement for categories three programs, so what we, what we saw earlier then, so, um. Do we have the movers lists at the table, or do I need to see mover and second? So bear with me until I get to that. All right, so there's a recommendation on the floor, and the recommendation reads, it's page seventy three of one seventy two. Uh, that committee recommend that council enter into a cost. A portioning agreement with the South Nation Conservation Authority, helps me have my glasses on. Uh, to continue the delivery of category three non-mandatory programs and authorize the mayor clerk to execute the agreement. Um, so we had the presentation earlier, um, I think everything was pretty clear, does anyone have any comments or any questions or? Or any further discussion before I ask for movers?
Uh, just, just to follow, we had, you know, I was asking some questions, but I was concerned about certain things, and I think that, uh. Uh, between Carl and Ron, it's like you're not sure your answer and, and, uh, you know, the, 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 of, uh. Uh, Mr. Hunter as well, his experience, and I, I think that, you know, while, you know, I have a little bit of reservations, I don't think it's enough, but, uh. Uh, to block me at anything, I'm missing, so appreciate your time coming out here and, uh. Uh, and and talking through that, and it is just a real occasion, makes, I, I see what they're trying to do, unfortunately, they're not have to put a quite, you know, something out there. You know, it, it will unfortunately, but it's only a small amount, and it's not something that's extra, so next council, at least for the year, just on this wedding, but. It's, uh, it's only the first year, any reason, because we all know, it's just getting used to being the answer at that time, so. That's all, yeah, yeah, I think that's just what I was thinking about.
Uh, all right, so then, moved, thank you, seconded, further discussion. Here and then call the question, all over. All right, so action information item B, unmetered residential properties in cardinal updates. See, or, or, wait, just one second, uh, thanks again, Carl.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all, see yous.
Thanks very much for coming.
And we'll, that'll go on to the council agenda at the end, at the last, the first, the last Monday of the month, correct? Have a good night, take care of him. All right, sorry to cut you off, Mr. Ronald.
Good day, I'm here at Seaford, we're in the year residential class, in two thousand twelve. Departed with three or four months to implement a universal allowing even program in Cardinal, we're all in program with. Uh, during the universal water creative program, water meter installation costs recovered by the township. Uh, by law, twenty twenty three eleven outlines current rates and fees includes two categories, where water meters were not as well as category A. Residential properties which cannot be used in unusual or difficult plumbing. Um, which prevents the installation of water meters at excess cost from millions, and category B. Our rates, um, with users who refuse or unfollow, whether they have a water meter installed. I made up a little bit of a table, just to kind of compare some examples. Metered disummon rates versus what the monthly and annual charge would be versus what the annual. Uh, rate A, annual rate B, would be a kind of good idea. On what somebody that's uneared would be paying compared to some of that meter. Um, in twenty twenty, it's true, the monthly water consumption was eleven point four eight cubic liters per month, fifty two cubic liters per month per commercial. Um, uneared residential properties that need to be consumed, we made a little. An average of about eighteen point, uh, ninety cubic liters of water in months to reach category A rates and forty seven. Point eight eight cubic liters of category B, so usage below eighteen point five nine cubic liters would be a cost savings for the city and an extra expense for the customer. Usage above this amount, eighteen point five nine would be a revenue loss for our system and saving for use. So we came up with three options and potential solution. One option would be that we just do category A and B rates the same with A R. Option two, we could increase category A rates. Uh, this option could potentially pass for more revenue from uneared pipes and some users, and possibly motivate users to have water here. Or option three, or we could re-espat properties, set the feasibility of installing water meters in a few locations to install. Uh, one policy implication would be that option two would require living water rates in by law twenty twenty three eleven. Financial considerations, option one would be no financial tax. Option two, would increase revenue to the current water sewer system. One option three, I, uh, tip see estimate on a plumbing contractor, which will be approximately one hundred twenty nine dollars per hour for. Inspection during regular business hours, this would cost approximately fifteen hundred and forty dollars, uh. For twelve properties, if, if they invoice individually. Obviously, multiple inspections could occur within one day, there'd be cost savings on overall inspections. Um, then additional charges would be incurred for any installation. Um, our recommendation would be to, uh, direct staff to schedule a private contractor to reassess residential properties currently being invoiced under. The new rates and cover this extension of our, our water system. And then direct staff to go on and.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ronald, all right, so, uh. So there is a recommendation, I think, uh, it was just read, there's three, there's three, uh, three options, obviously, uh, on there, I mean, I guess, maybe we should have. Have the discussion or see, um, see if somebody wants to move on, or something like that, so, let's, let's go first. Deputy?
Yeah, thank you, I'll do the chair. How many residents, right now, owner residents, that are uncooperated? It won't less than twelve, is that right, or fifteen?
Twelve that are not meters were installed, uh, do, uh. Time during viewing program, which is difficult to install, we do have a certain number of meters that are currently being, uh. And have ears, which we are currently resetting these alarms, so they're not indicating the meter rates, they have the metering card installed.
Right, so is, is it twelve though, we're looking at twelve or fifteen max?
Uh, you can actually, uh, as well, the, uh, of, of the properties that, uh, were originally installed.
And is, are they all, like, are giving us a hard time to unlock meters, or is there some just too hard to install?
No, once this year, uh, leave other than one, uh, they were all in category A, because at the time during the, uh, metering program, plumbers, uh. Indicate that they were too difficult for location to install without, not just with plumbing, but with kind of contracting, with the moving walls or.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's, that's where, so the idea is, do we want to spend additional money to have these properties reassessed? To potentially have one here, or?
Fine, gotcha. Can, can I, uh, insert anything? I'll make a motion that we take, uh, recommend option three.
Okay, insert a second for that. Take your bit, um, I think the first one I saw was council, I tell, um. Okay, so further discussion.
Let's just see. Sorry, just wanted to put it by the, uh, uh, exactly in there. How many things also, sort of, what we consider, I think at the start, we have. Three or four refusal, we are not, well, one, one in category.
Uh, uh, so, hold on for that, then, so we have a mover and second, right, we're good, right, so. And so what happened with those refuses, they have meters installed then?
No, so, the, the, the refusal, that's where you give, you give the, that, right, charity, just.
Right, so, so if at the beginning there were four of them, and now there's only one of them, and they didn't get meters installed.
So, so the three, the, the, the three that weren't compatible, you did have to do that.
They did, uh, that was my.
My, 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 my.
Yeah, so.
I would say.
Well, we still have twelve users that are.
Yes, I, I.
Paying a system.
A lot of twelve, uh, are related to, um, difficulty of installation, one is.
Wait, so. For the one that is the refusal, is it the same landlord? Do we expect that same, that same reaction when that person is approached again, and if so, what are, I mean. What are our options of that?
With the chair, I think if it's, um, a refusal, then it's going to be paid the, uh, three times, three. The, the, um, unless, we want to, uh, do that with rates and.
So just so that we're clear, they're paying three times, three times an average rate, now, that one happens. With the refusal. Okay, so really what we're looking at is, if it's the same landlord, and in that case, and then refuses again, you're looking at eleven owners, really not twelve, correct?
Uh, I wouldn't. Uh, local doctor?
Yeah, no, I, 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 I'm the same, well, certainly have refused, a meter, which is determined. At time of installation, but on, on, it would be, it would be, I mean, gain a substantial cost. To get it installed, that's why we, we could, uh, broke average insulation, uh. For one. Increase the uh. It would be it would be for my. It just obviously never. Their averages were a little bit long, you you. We would actually. You see.
Got some more time?
Um, through the narrative to the C O or. To. The stable. So we've had these a lot of people, but. We were unable to do it before, then we expect that something has changed, that we're gonna be able to do it now?
Through the chair, um, we may go in there, nothing's changed, we may go in there and um different contract, I mean, being able to. Mind that option saying.
Nothing.
Comes to all, so. Here's the curve, we need to come back and report this, if nothing's changed, and there's something very top. Those all, maybe not. Not able to install.
Yeah.
So we'll be through the chair over the thing, I'm gonna put contract. Or decide along the group or.
I I'm not, I I'm through the chair, I don't know whether the original contract, but I just um whether to that. Funny call, but um low range now, and have these uh.
We say.
It would it would be a different, it would be a different contract uh that was in a sort of universal funding uh program. Was on the um. Alister, I think. At the time, so they would have had some contractors, which uh. So not. Be the final one.
Uh, perfect.
No, I I I think uh I think the first step like we talked about is it's made sense to me, but uh that we just look at getting the price and you see the process, and it's. We're trying to see that, and then if that doesn't work out, then obviously then it's one of the other options, right?
I was gonna say, I was gonna ask when when was last done, I mean, twenty twenty twelve, so uh you know, things have changed technology wise and paperwork, I think about that much, but not a long. Okay, so we're moved if we're seconded, I don't see anybody rushing to get in for more conversation. Then um. So it was uh option three, correct? So I'll just read it so that everybody understands, again, direct staff schedule a private con- contractor to reassess. Residential properties currently being invoiced under. Under meter rates and. Cover this expense under the cardinal water systems operations budget into. Direct staff provide council report on the inspection findings once completed. Pretty good with that? It's been moved and seconded. More than conversation, all very. All right. All right, so procurement policy. Sorry, I had a rush, I. Punched my right hand, so.
You can introduce it, but uh you you'll you'll notice it, it's uh. What are the information discussion, uh I don't, there is no recognition. From view was at least highlighting a few of the uh. Changes from the twenty fifth premium uh policy to the twenty point three policy. It was just at a very broad level, um the new policy, the section one is new. And it's just basically indicating the uh legislative authority uh to um put it in the procurement policy in place. Section two, it it gives a little bit of a purpose and it's so uh around the policy. Section. Three point line, which. Um, which would be page one fifty three to one seventy two. So three uh um plus three point one, it is a new clause. Section uh three or plus three point one, or sort of three point four is a new clause. Section four definitions, uh the original policy did not have definition. Were required to uh. For a definition section in. Um. Section. Five, so we'll plus five point five on page one fifty eight. This is just sort of extending the the original for doing the policy uh topic of the um. Sort of the rest of all departments uh coming together to 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 try and get better prices and getting product, it's just sort of um. Extending without where there there are certain scenes that we may be able to. Uh partner relationship, because we don't trust law and uh under. Municipalities uh give them to to pretty uh. Improving the uh the purchase going uh in in the air. Um, section. Plus six uh point one five. So we just wanna spend a little bit, that was annoying the uh sort of in the information item. Um, looking not not number one to uh look at the increasing the uh. Whether from from taking thousand to to seventy five thousand. But also looking at some of those, you know, we are annual routine. Uh tenders that way each year that typically. We find ourselves uh above that uh limit. That so long as there is a pretty uh. Budget at the start of the year, that it was already should be able to uh approve that staff, not which again in uh. A report brought, and so he gave the uh sort of tender results, including the approval meant to. Um, good example, right now is the building patching. Uh. Tender is out and closed this morning. It may be difficult when we reach the uh end of the month. Uh for 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 wording uh to get uh to get that work completed. Where if it was uh if it if it was within that budget amount, it would be part of the free. He would be able to proceed with that, I mean, which is uh bring that report to council and give it. That's uh that's uh. Those really, I I would say, but most of that. That clause sort of summarizes the 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 two big changes. Plus six point one eight uh has the um. Addition of the the single source uh with their location defenders. Where goods and services are in short supply, they might be conditions. Certainly found, there are some some issues during the young limits with respect to uh. For lies on shore order, it would be viable, if we were able to proceed with some of those those purchasing things, there are those patterns. Well, in uh in circumstances, on occasion, when we do, we see only one bid. That would be, we would be able to proceed based on that, or we get to get. It's not about it, but I think about it for a bit. That's just a sort of a high level, uh hopefully it was uh. Uh, really, the uh the changes, but. Put up what it means. Policy and uh. Hope you got.
Thank you, C O. All right, so discussion on the changes, so let's discuss.
Well, I mean, it makes, you know, it's it's. You know, it's been a fifty thousand, well, it makes sense, simple inflation, everything else, the the need to increase, that makes sense, and uh. Uh, a lot of the things you've worked on here are similar to what I see in the uh. You know, in random, in my job, if you win my day job, which it's everything now. Uh, nothing there is a real surprise. Um, the only question I have, when it says C O or is it C O or treasurer, or is it C O and treasurer have to sign for uh? Is it like a two-signal system, we have to have to perform it, or is it? What are they on?
Um, for uh.
Oh, sorry, for uh for the thirty thou-, well, I guess for for the thirty thousand, for the five thousand?
For that, for that, they they can be the C O or treasurer, but typically 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 it's. It it it's done uh by by all. It would just be in those circumstances where. Either, I I I was aware of the German reason.
How's this matter?
Uh, I just have one question. Um. When when you're saying fifty thousand dollars, or you don't need to, how many times can they do that? Any year? They they spend their whole budget with dust, if they don't spend fifty thousand dollars, that's true.
So I I through the uh through 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 the mayor, it would only be uh in circumstances where that. Budget amount was wasn't approved, so um. Probably not a sample, because now it's it 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 uh we got suppressing seems to be all of it, yeah. But fifty thousand, our technically, well, that's pressing danger. Uh, we're 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 commanding around uh fifty thousand. First of all, if a lot of the logic was true for that, it would be something that. Would we learn that? Okay. Typically, uh. Lately, I would say in the last few years, that that would be something would be uh close, and then you become to. Committee or council. For council.
Good.
Uh, yes, I just have, so that include an example vehicle? Uh. We wanna go electric, but we wanna go hybrid. And vehicle comes up four by four. For fifty thousand. Could that be purchased without our consent? Vehicles on that example? If we wanna try it. Try it a hundred.
I would I I I would say through the. That would certainly will be. In actually, I don't, but we start to be. Into a vehicle, so within within that threshold, it would be something that could. Uh, certainly proceed. Um, whatever, what I would, what what I would um. Suggested that if if there is a direction with respect to um. Looking at um uh hybrid or electric vehicles that. We 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 look at the sound machine policy, you know, if respected that. It would be that does as part of an overall uh point action. So that's not one of, it's that it would be more of a policy direction, that is, I don't know, I think.
So. Ultimate for one sec. So so we're looking at a at a at a, so if we budget it, if we're saying we budget fifty five thousand then for. For dust suppressant. And it comes in at anything under seventy five thousand. It doesn't need to come back from council, is that what we're? Is that the implication of this?
You know, that's a good, that's a great examples, if we budgeted fifty five thousand for dust suppressant. Seventy thousand, then it would we would we would not have. Forty, because it's not within the project. So it would didn't need to come back.
So if we give fifty for a new. Vehicle purchase, it would have to come back if it was fifty thousand and one, so.
Um, if it was, if if it was uh fifty thousand and one before uh H S D. But typically, those courses are planned to or or before H S D.
Okay, so explain then to to me or to committee them exactly what the what the difference actually is then? Why are we going from fifty to seventy five?
Um, I would, I I would say in in a number of circumstances, um such as. Um. Dust suppressing and and probably few others, all I mean is that they are um if it now over that fifty thousand threshold, then it. To me, it's it it's an annual item that has been viewed during during budget time, that would be ten thousand dollars to go into that. Uh, particular items, as long as it was. On change, but that with with that amount, I think the uh process gets adjusted in the. Uh, approved, to to prevent any. You know, you may leave the way, and it's it's going to be reported to the council. In the example, I I I ended up with that under and. What that what that.
I'm not quite sure I understand, so. So like uh in the twenty twenty four budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Are you saying saying that anything under seventy five thousand wouldn't require a council approval?
I would say that you can under seventy five thousand, it wasn't already approved by council, not in the budget. Would not require a second council approval, unless it was a. Capital project.
I'm trying to say, I mean, it's if I understand this, right? So, let's go back to the truck, we budgeted, I'd just say it was fifty eight thousand dollars for the truck, okay? Um, and we didn't during budget process specify whether we have electric vehicle or anything like that, because we, I think we could have that direction given as well at that same time, I was thinking. Um, so it came in fifty five or six, fifty six thousand, or something like that. It would not have had to come back here. But if we didn't budget for a truck at all, and we had fifty six thousand dollars, just at the same price, we would have had to discuss it here. Because it wasn't part of the budget.
Yes, if we're if we're using the truck example, let's uh let's let you ones that are. For simply, let you go our our food production cost of from fifty thousand. So if we're if we're, if we if if our budget was for a. Vehicle. And the budget was. Five thousand. And. The price committed fifty three thousand. We would be, we would, we would be back to committee. Uh, I don't think. Committee and council. Because it's. It's over that fifty thousand pressure. So if you had forty nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, it would be within the delegated authority on C O or. To the same budget, and it's within that. Get back. But our budget be.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, no, I'm just.
I'm still trying to get confused, so so if we, in budgeting, if we do fifty five, let's say. Uh, for for just press and. And in in budget.
Yeah.
And it's going to be sixty. And we change this number to seventy five, does it have to come back to us again, or does it put it within delegated authority?
It is not put it under, it it within delegated authority, because it's over the.
What we're booking.
We only, we we all, we all, council only approved fifty five thousand.
So what's an instance?
Sixty thousand. It.
Yeah, so.
It's it it it's outside the delegated authority, because it's it it is not approved.
So what?
It it requires some.
What's an instance that would? So seventy, the the seventy five would fly? Give me a a rock solid, clear example of why we would do this.
So that, so we budgeted uh dust suppressant for um sixty five thousand. And dust suppressant can give sixty three thousand.
Don't come back, yes.
We would, we would, we would not come back for attention approval. If it's if it's in budget, and it's and it would be within the.
Same for road patching then.
And and then they were just there in one model. We awarded dust suppressant.
Yeah.
Then down. And yet it is the.
So so if we, if we budget seventy thousand dollars for for road crack ceiling and and patching, or anything that's under seventy five. Or anything that's under that budgeted number. Up to up to the number is fine.
Uh, yes, so so we budgeted.
Yeah.
Seven, seven, seven thousand for first to uh national matching.
Okay.
As long as it can end uh at seventy thousand or less. And the delegated authority was seventy five thousand, it would just be approved there. At the C O.
And there's no. Right, because it's already been approved in the budget.
Because it's already been approved in budget, again, it's within the.
And there's nowhere outside of that that we we would see an expenditure of seventy five thousand dollars to less without it coming to us. Like if it was approved, uh uh we would see everything that's approved in the budget, I'm talking about something that's outside of that.
If it, if it, if it's outside of the the approved budget, it is required.
Is there a number that it's not?
Number that's not.
That's changing? Like, are we changing a number that is not required?
Um, no, we're 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 just, what what do you change, is the? Is the upset limit of of the delegate for, but all all under cir- all under circumstances, right? Now, the improved budget item. It had to, it had to come in. On the lower, in order to 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 proceed. If it's ever started with that, that area, then it will be back to.
Okay. Okay. So. I don't wanna be sitting up here and look like an idiot, I'd rather look like an idiot tonight.
It's not, I don't think it's good, I think it's good to have clarity, that's why. That's why we didn't, that's why we didn't want to bring. The recognition burnt off, because it's it's a very important policy, but we're we're looking at areas where. It may be um some efficiencies, operational delays, that we don't have to believe. Um, uh several weeks for or after full special appearance, we we get an often approve a lot of items, so that we get. We do a sufficient window for the contract.
Okay, that's just.
That that really, it really does just speed things up with with even that same uh.
Yeah, can I just add to? So, we have a seventy five thousand limit. We have uh dust.
Proposed.
Proposed, yeah, proposed, okay, so, and and we have it uh for the dust suppression at seventy seven, it comes in at seventy nine, it's gotta come back, can't we?
It 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 needs to go back.
It's gotta come back.
It needs to come back.
It's over budget.
I should say it may or, you know, so because. Depending depending on that timing, we may want to.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. That's right, but it's because it's over the seventy five and over budget.
Over the the approved budget.
Right.
Thank you. So, um. Like, we're. You mean, so. We 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 were focused quite often on the thirty to seventy five K one. So on the under thirty thou- the the five thousand to thirty thousand one. For instance, uh where, you know, let's just say a department, we just approve a certain amount of dollars for 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 spend. Uh, that could be spent up to thirty thousand, let's just say something comes up that, you know. Wasn't really planned, but the fact is, we just have a dollar value, we give to the department, so that thirty thousand can you. Incur- incurred, um and obviously, it's the department head responsibility to figure out. Have they either saved that money for something else, or balance things, or come back, any more money, that's that true statement? It's only when they exceed that budget where they would have to come back there.
Well, I'm. So so with respect to 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 a a department, it typically, if there's. And and what we found is, it is is like, there's been a number of uh uh. Of projects that. Uh, that that the quotes have come back like. Twenty one thousand, twenty two thousand, in 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 that range, and then it's like. The department, the the department doesn't have the authority to approve that, needs to go to the treasurer, the C O. For 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 approval, and 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 it's the same mechanism, right? If if you had budgeted for an amount, and 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 then within that amount. It just. It just makes sense for the department to proceed in that direction, if it was. Two thousand dollars less, they would. It just, it it just seems there's a number of those items that are. That 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 are coming in, and 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 like secured in those, tho- tho- those agreements, now all of a sudden. You're with your, you're the new game, that that issue. So it's just really the. The same protection mechanisms are coming in place, that would exist that. At forty thousand, fifty thousand, you're just moving that. That limit from to thirty and etc. But the same, the same protection. If that makes sense, if that makes it. Going on? And when there's like. Common, there isn't something, can't happen, crisis is just working, you know, from the last council, or. Exploitation and stuff, how many times and stuff from that council that we. Lost over in a truck once, and the government. Coming back to help, but it's a long time, but. Well, then you want three points, you said, and you know, you keep keeping, you're well on the point yourself, or. There's a doubt about the location, it's a, what you do, but when you only have one supplier, that was. And the policy is only used for search reports.
That's a good thing to wait on. Okay, uh, anyone for this?
All right. I think it's a. I mean, if it, if it raises issues. And I mean, if you can get something. If rather than having to wait and have prices go up again, then it makes sense to me. As long as the the chance analysis is in place. Makes sense?
Yeah, and and ultimately, it comes. Like if we're talking about a truck, or if we're talking about dust suppressant. We'll see those numbers for a budget anyways, we'll know what the dollar values are that will be asked to approve. Uh, it doesn't mean that we're going to be getting further, so then we're gonna have to approve those those numbers uh at any moment, so.
Yeah, through the, through the, so the uh, yes, but through 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 the budget deliberations, those numbers are set, and then.
Doesn't mean to increase any likelihood.
So if if any project that's a that's above that. Seventy five thousand, uh, right, it's going to be, it's going to need to come back for additional. Except now, getting those. What we would. Like, I I I get that, you know, fifty to seventy thousand, it sounds like a lot, but they're they're really. A small scope compared to what our own budget is, and if we can, we can speed that up, we will not have to. To with the wait for um. For part of that time, for you know, seeing over a few days to get the time, and actually get the lenders' line, everything, they can just. Do that, make an approval on on that, on the minutes that that are already been approved and.
Yeah, makes sense. Um, I think the only other question I would have, and I think maybe you touched on it a little bit earlier. Um. We have certainly. Uh, indicated over the last little bit that we would like. Let's piggyback if possible. On, you know, on our neighbors or United Counties, or. Piggyback, if it, you know, at least gives us the option. To possibly procure it less, is there something in this policy? That that suggests that we piggyback first? Or or that we look at those avenues? So that we don't have to give special direction or separate direction during budget or during anything else, that we just know that it's already been done?
That's okay, that's true, so we have to look at page one fifty eight. Uh, cross point five. The topic is, we gave it a case, we versus case, and what we're purchasing, but really, really what, what kind of is, is to be a little clearer with respect to, um, uh, to stop that that ability exists, and we, we think we should be exploring that when, when possible.
Yeah, the keyword being the May, right?
For, for that, it, it, it is in May, but, and as it was prior, yeah, we, we, the twenty five, also does not actually, um, provide the indication with, with respective law, which is thing, but you, you, you know that we have, uh, for, for, for instance, a couple of examples that I can think of is what the, uh, the, uh, winter soul. When we wanted the, the, the apartment with the community, we can, we can add this here, and to get that, to get that, but the same, there really is nothing within the existing procurement policy that would even stipulate that's, that that's an option, we're, 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 we're speculating in some of those, in some of those directions now, and it just gives, provides the, the cause, but in the sort of that, that, that thing that's yes. It, it, this is something that, 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 you know, answers the, 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 with respect to, uh, these issues.
Well, not only for us, but maybe it helps our neighbors as well.
Right.
Okay, those are mine, anyone else? All right, so information, correct, not, not actually, uh, is there an action, there's no action on this one, right, information only? We'll see, or do we want to?
I, I, I would. Yeah, if there's, if there's some further level with the document that is presented, which.
Those are my questions.
Here, like, like, here, the, 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 for any committee from, from the, the, uh, for committee to make the, whatever, then, you know, say, about, and put your, the policy that.
Changes. And there were, there were no changes to what's here, everybody was comfortable with what was here, and so everything was explained before. Okay.
Can I make your motion?
Uh, that we accept the. You want to wordsmith this for me? I'm looking to the clerk, just let, let the clerk read something.
Uh, motion to be that we recommend council's office, call the.
How's that sound?
Well, sir, well, well, move by council, or it's all second by council smell.
Is there further discussion on that recommendation? There are none, then, all in favor of that motion? Good, okay. There we go. The speed of government. Okay, uh. Uh, all right, A D, fire department disposal, disposal of surplus bits, did you get it, did you get it?
Yeah, I did, yeah, okay, all right, um, it's on page one seventy two of the package, for anybody who doesn't have it.
My key, I'm sorry, mine keeps freezing still, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get down there. There, all right, so there's a recommendation, and that's, and I'm gonna read the recommendation, I'll ask somebody to leave it seconded, and then we can discuss it once it's done on the floor. So that committee recommend that council declare the above mentioned item a surplus to the needs of the township and offer a staff to dispose of the items, item through go deals dot com. So, um.
To, just to. Go there.
Well, that, that's the recommendation, we, we can discuss it before, you're more comfortable discussing, you want to discuss it?
I, I just have one question, is that the one that we always use as a government one, or did we use the local one? Like for those pumps that we sold, and so on and so's.
True.
Sorry.
No, not, not, not at all, uh. We have, uh, we, we, you know, I was, uh, just, you know, uh, a, a tender submission for, in certain cases that have not resolved, which, we went, uh, and used, uh, multiple. Uh, that, that, that was some, um, reasonable results, but, uh, I think that what we found is that, uh, the national children has been through the, the, the last, um, public. The, the nineteen ninety six fire and.
Yeah. Where was that?
Put up, it was something like eighteen thousand.
Yeah, to government?
Yes, so, so it's our, that, that we're hearing, uh, uh, we. The government of the National Children.
Thank you. Uh, I think, I, I want to ask a question, but, so. Why is it surplus to a need?
So, um, tanker, tanker, tanker to the bush, what, what, what replaced that, that was purchase, uh, last year, and it's about the surplus, so.
There's no need for this for any other purpose? Like township purpose?
Uh, you know, there, 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 there was some, uh, consideration, uh, given to, um, potentially, I mean, in light of public works, in respect to, uh, telling you, this is, this is a little bit more than, 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 um, the, 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 in particular, not, uh, not, um, a P T O, so, so it's not a driving though. So it's either, it's either, it's, it's, it's either you're in drive mode, we're in pop mode, you don't have the ability to drive in both at the same time, so it doesn't, it, 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 it probably most likely doesn't, whatever, um, what it must be, it, it, as you would have to, you, you, you would have to look at, you know, that, um, convert it to, to, to video, that's even possible, and.
We won't.
I, I do forget my, my, my interest on whether that's, uh, the fact it's, it's likely possible, it's just not. So I think you'd have to take the percent, so, you know, you see, that it's being, uh, being used, uh.
Is it, from a fire perspective, we bought another one? It's out, like, it's, it, it's no, I get it's surplus, but is it, it's still usable, like? Like, is another fire department, that's amusing?
With the, 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 uh. Unlikely that there'll be another fire department in Ontario would, uh, would purchase it to use it, with respect to, uh, the, the, simply the age of the unit, it's, you, you would, you would have to get that, um, retrofitted and, and, and have the capacity to retrofit to meet that standard, it's unlikely that, uh, that would be the case in, in this province. Um, there are, um, some of these that don't have that same claim, but potentially, there may be, there, there may be, um, you know, used, I mean, one purchase, and, and, and maybe they're.
Last question, I promise. Is, is the, it's a two thousand freight liner, we had problems, we had to replace a motor on another, um, uh, dump truck, and we had problems with one of the fire department vehicles that had the same motor as the public works. Trucks that we had the motor problems with, is this the same motor?
Um, the two thousand freight liner, well, not, 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 not the same, uh, same.
That's gas, like, this is gas.
But, 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 but it's no, it's an older model, I, I just can't remember the date, when. Those engine models, uh, switch, switch.
I was thinking back to that one that had the coolant and the oil issue. And, and this, this is the same motor, and it hasn't had those issues, it might, might be worth a while, people, that's all I was, that's where I was going with it, but.
I would say still, the storage would be, uh. Uh, to the mayor, to the mayor's point, to the C A O, do we have any idea what kind of value we're talking about? The mayor, just, just going by, by rescue and, uh, I, like, I don't, I, I don't know if there, I don't know if there would be this market, but I, I would be surprised if we weren't in, uh, you know, somewhere potentially between one and thirty, but it's hard to, it's hard to see what the, what the market is for that, for, 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 for the unit, if you're not using it in, uh, in the fire service, the problem he has to deal with it.
Not the rest.
You shut, I, 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 I don't think shuttle them.
And, and, are you done?
So, I just, are we able to reserve on that? You know, to the, to the mayor's point, if you need a, a new gen or a parts, and we only sell a cent for like five grand, you, you would serve true. But, but, the, the mayor, I'm asking, because I once bought a fully functional truck, fire truck, that I knew one, but it was twelve hundred bucks, because. I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's, but a lot of things are, that are mostly used that, it recycles, source, again, but I do believe it's meant to be channeling, but, I, I'm able to get, with respect to that. But, but I'm not one who is insured, that, that I don't think.
Last question. Um. Refresh my memory, what, when we get the twenty five, this will get twenty five for it. Um, when we get the twenty five for, where does the twenty five go?
With, with the, uh, with, with, in the, uh, fire department, I did, I believe there, there wasn't value, I'm going to say, it's probably around the fifteen thousand, that would put it, with respect, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, that, uh, the, the.
In their, beside, on the, on the fire department.
Okay, I think we're, I, I think we're going a little bit more, because we just, the reality is not, not on that.
Okay.
Certainly should, uh.
All right, I read the recommendation, I don't think I had a word in second that I were correct, anyone else want to weigh in before? Anyone? Everybody's playlist, all right, so then, uh, that committee recommend that council declare the above mentioned item a surplus to the needs of town for the north边的staff to dispose of the item through go deals dot com. Um, can I have a number? Moved by council board, seconded. Uh, council smell, all in favor? opposed? Okay, good. Uh, council notices, or, excuse me, council inquiries, notice more, and when I, inquiries or notices more.
Uh, one of the fire attendings?
Yes.
Uh, to the mayor, the C A O, I've had a request to speak, or a, a letter concerning crosswalks across the two highway. Northside, so, I've had this brought up in letters from residents before, I'm just wondering why we, we came in, and finishing off that section, would now be the, a time, I'm assuming that's a county rule, you never involve a county, but it seems like it would be an optimal time to, you know, put up a crosswalk along those parks, along the cross, and I would, I would say for residents. Is that something we might be able to, to talk to the county about, is, is feasible? Uh, through, through, through the mayor, you, you could certainly raise that, uh, to the, uh, to, to, you know, um, and, and. Most, probably, whether, whether you enjoy it, or if it's, it's, uh, uh, probably, but you could share it with. Just, the reason they, they got involved in the, uh, seeing what kind of response to get, with respect. Probably, right, in, but, well, you go, you're putting it into some, uh, terrorist essential. Passes. Well, I'm, am I, am I right on the scene, or it would have to be a county thing, or? Maybe just go ahead and say the multiple crosswalk, the, the crosswalk.
So I just want to remember that, that this is inquiries, not really discussion, right, we don't want to turn this into a, into a discussion, if we wanted as an item for early committee, then I, I would ask that, that we do that, I think, you know, the inquiry, and you can contact the county, and, and we can move the plan. No, I don't want to turn this into a big long discussion. Um, further inquiries or?
I just have a big chat for recreation, uh, staff, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, at Spencerville Fair, well done, uh, so, we can hire the doctor, organize, and pick this down to uh, all professional, uh, update from them, and it's nice to see, I think, the public works ended up coming up today and helping to, didn't they, and that they're all coming on the Fitzpatrick, so, please send my, Chris and, and Mike, and send my. Thank you, the staff, both parties, both council. Thank you.
Any further? There are none, then, uh, no real mayor's report, just, I want to echo that, that, um, you know, that, that comment, I attended the fair. And Labor Day, and, um, what seems like one, was long week, um, I can't imagine what it's like, big guys trying to close schools, open arenas, run vast tournaments, like, with, with all of the, you know, the things that, that you did, uh, with, um, you know, the festival committee, and Labor Day, and, and Spencerville Fair, so just compliments to staff, you guys are doing a knockout job, I think, for, you know, everything's fantastic, and, I guess, we're, we're, we're enjoyed with the work that everyone's passed that along, I think that's it for, for mayor, I guess I, I should, I should, um. I want to say, you know, congratulations to, to the fair board, and, um, to Eric, and, and all of the, the volunteers, all of the, the residents that came out, all of the help that came out, again, to staff. Uh, certainly, when, when I was in Spencerville all weekend, uh, even in the rain on Sunday, um, the town was, was full, it was booming, and, and I've said this before, I'll say it again, that, that, well, the fair does well, but everyone, everyone does well. Uh, that, and all the businesses of Spencerville and the area certainly benefit from having, having a fair there, and, uh, and it really shows it, how full that thing is, and how, how active, and how busy that entire area, uh, is, so, so well done to, to the group, and well done to all the vol- volunteers. Okay, so, question period, there's no one here for question period, um, closed session, does somebody have the, um, the, uh, motion to move into closed session? That's what I don't.
Move by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Stephen Villalobos, municipal council proceeds into closed session at eight forty two, in order to address a matter of change to A section two thirty nine, two B personnel matters, whether they're identical, identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. Specifically succession planning, recreation, public works, environmental services, B section two thirty nine, two C, acquisition and disposition of land by the municipality or local board, specifically buyer owned property, and then it's a closed session, dated July tenth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you, uh, before we, before I call the vote on that, I, I will, uh, will say that, once I call the vote on it, we'll take a five minute, uh, uh, break, so that, um, anyone that needs to clear, the room can clear the room. Um, I will note again, that we'll come out of, of closed session, so that the deputy, deputy now can, uh, leave, uh, before we discuss, uh, item twelve, twelve P, so, um. Guess I call the question, correct? Yeah, then all of you are proceeding into closed session. Good, and then, so we'll take a five minute. It's okay, I'll read it.
Move by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Stephen Villalobos, the closed meeting of the municipal council is now adjourned, and the open meeting does now resume at seven thirty, at nine thirty seven P M.
Okay, just, so, uh, so for the, the clerk, just to note, the, the deputy mayor and, and the mayor are both, uh, leaving the table before, uh, the discussion goes back into closed to discuss, uh, item twelve. Can I, gentlemen?
So, we're like, we're like, we're like.
Let's walk over this one, stand up here, adjust the camera a little bit. Deputy Mayor Dylan.
Hey. I'm by, uh, John Radel, excited by, uh, myself. Uh, municipal council proceeds into closed session at. The municipal council proceeds into closed session at. Nine thirty eight, in order to address matter pertaining to. Bring down the time table. Uh, A, six to.
This twelve B? Twelve B, yeah, just twelve B.
Oh, just twelve B, yeah, sorry, pardon me, section two nine three. Two C, acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Specifically buyers of property and minutes of closed session dated July tenth, twenty twenty three.
Move by myself, seconded by uh councillor Lois Snail, that the closed meeting in the municipal council does now adjourn, and open meeting does resume at nine fifty one P M.
Very much. Um, okay, so the next thing I'll do is I'll report out and then we'll talk about this, okay? So uh uh so during closed session, as reported notes, um. Uh we we discussed uh with uh with the mayor, deputy mayor present as well, two thirty nine, number twelve A, section two thirty nine to B. Uh we discussed personal matters of identifiable individual, including municipal and local board employees. Specifically succession planning, recreation, public works and environmental services, and direction was given to the C A O. Um then we returned, obviously, and and the mayor deputy stepped out, and then we went back into closed session and discussed twelve B. Uh with councillor Snail, councillor Martell and myself. Um, and two thirty nine, two dash C, uh we get discuss a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land. By the municipality or local board, specifically buyers of property um. And direction was given to the C A O, and we also discussed uh minutes from the closed session dated July tenth, twenty twenty three. All right. But and we have, we're moving to the minutes, is that correct? Oh, uh. Yeah, no, sorry, that's sorry, yeah, we have a moving move by.
All right, we're so.
Okay, yeah, okay, my.
Uh move by myself, councillor Snail, and seconded by uh deputy mayor Steve Dillawal. That the municipal council received and proves the post session minutes.
That was we we discussed it with.
We we were only.
This.
I don't know when Steve's name.
One, no choice. Sorry, there it is.
There. Uh seconded by councillor Joe Martell, uh the municipal council receives and proves the post set and then it's dated July tenth, twenty twenty three.
Okay, uh that's good, okay, so um moving on to as there was thirteen, a a non. Some begotable, uh begotable motion for adjournment, uh and who was that, that was actually right here. Uh and that was moved by your gentleman, uh moved by myself. And uh seconded by councillor Joe Martell, the municipal council does adjourn at. What time is it, Joe, or?
The eight is what I'm.
Nine fifty eight P M. Hey. Very much. All right, all in favor? All right, the other there.
Want to change your thoughts on this, nine fifty eight.
We have to take all this down.